Ed, yours?
Oh, okay. Well, about 120 days ago, I had a request, it was during the budget sessions, to do a thorough review of the Culinary Center and report back to City Council to take a look at where we are and come up with a recommendation in terms of where we should go with it. So, I'm going to ask you to bear with me because I've got a very long, very multifaceted presentation to go through. Just to let you know what I'm about to go through, I'm going to start off with just a quick section on changes we're making to the VCB because that relates to some of the things we'll see in the Culinary Center presentation. Then I'm going to do a situation analysis, basically here's where we are right now. I'm going to talk about the original vision. I sat down with Rob Pounding and had a discussion with him on how they originally saw the Culinary Center and what it was supposed to do. And from there, we'll get into recommendations. So, let's go through it.
Kathy, will that mic pick up? And there?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have to use that one.
Okay, okay. Just as background, before I actually get into the presentation, my personal background. I used to work at Stone Mountain Park in the marketing department and for years after that, they were a client of mine, one airline company. Stone Mountain Park is owned by the citizens of Georgia.
I'm sorry, but they can't hear you at all.
I'll tell you what, Ed, come over here. I will run your speech. I'm coming to speak to them and...
It's your show, so I'll do the...
He's going to work from over here.
That's fine. That's going to be here. Rob's going to do the... You just give me the nod when you want me to advance.
Okay, I'll just... Okay, but anyway, I worked for Stone Mountain Park. It was owned by the state of Georgia and it was a big park, but it was not a state park. It was a state authority. And as a state authority, there was no tax money to come in to fund it, that it had to support itself and run itself. So, the revenue that was necessary for Stone Mountain Park to have its doors open and operate, it was responsible for generating enough revenue to make that happen. Okay, that's my mindset going into this. So, with that said, I'd like to talk in general first about those changes to the VCB. What I'm trying to do is to improve the focus, the efficiency, and the effectiveness of everything that we're doing. Everything is under review, not just the Culinary Center. You know, I'll hopefully be coming back to City Council and talking about other areas where we're looking to make changes and I'll do my best to keep you appraised on what we're doing. But, we're going to have a new marketing plan. We're going to do our best to have data-driven decisions. We've been working in partnership with Lodging Partners. Kip has been a huge help on this, opening doors and doing introductions and whatnot. But, for the best time, we know what our best potential markets are. We talked to a good cross-section of hotels. They gave us their check-in zip code information and by month, we know where people come from now. We also need to know what to tell folks to get them to Lincoln City, what makes us attractive, and we've been doing focus groups with hotels. We just wrapped up what we think will be the last one. We need to go through now and see where the common threads are and either announce we've come to a decision or maybe do a little quantitative research, but that's what's going to drive the marketing plan. We're only going to do those things we can afford to do well. We seem to have gone off on a lot of programs to talk to niche markets, but frankly, a lot of them, there just wasn't enough oomph there to make a difference. I don't want to take our marketing budget and sort of spray it out there to where there's no real impact. I want to focus it to where that message gets through and that message has to get through at least three times. There's a thing called the effective frequency model and if somebody doesn't hear your message three times, they're not going to act on it. That also talks to a core marketing message that builds across media. If they see an outdoor board and hear a radio spot and after that see a magazine ad, they should all say the same thing. So, you get to that magic three impressions and it's like, "I want to go to Lincoln City. I'm going to book a hotel." And again, I focus on key markets. What we do, we're going to do well. We're going to take what was a very broad effort and focus it to where it's going to do the most good. And, we're going to be doing this with partners. I want to work with lodging and restaurant and retail. I want to work with the attractions here in town. We've already started a nice partnership with the Oregon Coast Community College. We're talking to the folks at Career Tech about doing some things together. I've had meetings with folks from Samaritan North Lincoln Hospital and Travel Oregon. We had tremendous opportunities through them that we just have never even tried to realize that we're going to go after and make happen. I also want to be a good steward of VCB resources. When I got here, I had a lot of people coming in going, "Hey, I need some floats for this" or "Give me some glass starfish." I had a hotel property come in and go, "Well, hey, every year I get 150 glass starfish to use as incentives." And it's like, "Really? Where do you, what do you do with them?" He goes, "Oh, they're incentives to our call center." And I said, "Well, that's kind of cool. Where's your call center?" He said, "Phoenix, Arizona." It's like, "Did they only book the Pacific Northwest?" "No, they book all over the country." And it's like, "And what do these starfish do?" "Well, they make people aware of Lincoln City." And it's like, "Do you have a lot of folks who don't know where they're going to call your call center?" "Well, no." Long story short, I pulled the plug on it. I went in and I talked to Liz and it's like, "What do these starfish cost?" "They were $8 apiece." He was asking for $1,200 bucks. That'd be like me stroking a check for $1,200 saying, "Hey, no problem. If you need more, let me know." Those days are over. So, anything we have that we paid for is treated the same as cash. And, I've probably come off as scrooge to some folks in town, not coming up with things to give away, but that's the rationale behind it. I'm taking what we pay for very seriously and that's not a float, that's a 10 and a five, and that's not a starfish, that's a five and three ones. And that's the way those things are being treated now. The other thing I'm trying to do is to utilize staff time in the most efficient and effective manner possible. That's a resource and it's a resource we pay a lot of money for. I want to recognize and nurture talent and I've been very fortunate in the fact that I've got great people. I don't know who did the hiring before I came here, but I inherited a wonderful, wonderfully talented staff. I'm pushing decision-making down to the lowest point possible in the organization. I'm giving people ownership of the area that they're in and when they do something right, I'm going to hold them up and demonstrate what they did. This presentation looks nice because Scott put it together. We're going to get into some charts with a lot of graphs and numbers and all that and that was a Herculean effort by Liz who had to go in with our convoluted budget and accounting system and figure out where all these expenses were. And it wasn't very consistent and you guys probably know better than I do, having been through budget meetings in the past, but there was actually detective work where she moved heaven and earth to pull all this together and make it happen. We want to be an incubator, not a creator. We just moved event permitting from finance back up to the VCB. And, what I want to do is to, if somebody wants to be an event promoter, if somebody wants to bring an attraction to town, if we find an area that, you know, if we had this thing in town, boy, wouldn't it be great? I don't want the VCB to own and operate it. I want to find somebody in private industry that's interested in getting it started and I will do whatever I can in terms of seed money and promotion and help and direction and resources, but at the end of the day, we back off and it's on its own. So, you know, whether that be an event, a festival, or an attraction, that's the direction I want to take. And also continually adapt to an ever-changing media environment. I'd like to say that had I been born in the Middle Ages, I'd have the easiest life in the world. I would have learned to trade and done it my entire life and hand it off to my kids and it had to be good for like 300 or 400 years. Unfortunately, now, everything changes every six months. I mean, I look back at what I used to do, I don't know, 15 years ago and it's from the Dark Ages. It's, you know, dinosaur kind of stuff. And, we need to keep on top of it. And, what we're going through right now is kind of what the world went through when Gutenberg took the wraps off the printing press. You know, being able to read was something that only the kings and the priests and whatnot could do back then and all of a sudden it was democratized and everybody learned how to read and the whole world turned upside down. The other shoe just dropped where anyone can publish. It's not just somebody can get a book deal and the very few that can get something published. Now, it's anybody with a cellphone can publish worldwide immediately and nobody right now knows completely what that means. All I know is we need to learn how to do it. So, I'll be coming back to City Council eventually, talking about how we need to have a robust video capability, how we need to be generating content for media partners, and take advantage of things like Channel 4. You know, not that City Council meetings aren't entertaining, don't get me wrong, but having them in endless rotation to me is not a good utilization of that resource. I think there's some interesting things we can do with it and I'll get into that later. So, Culinary Center. Where are we right now? This is it. In a nutshell, we spend $191,797 on the Culinary Center and we bring in $77,520 in revenue. Our revenue as a percent of cost is 40.42%. And frankly, I find that unacceptable. This is the biggest thing that needs to change. And as we go through this presentation, I'd like to talk about how we can change that.
What percentage would be acceptable, Ed?
I'd like to see it close to break even, maybe not 100% there. And, one of the things I didn't put in this chart on purpose was things like public relations and, you know, how many room nights do we think we're booking because of it? Because those numbers are a little squishy. And, really, from just looking at revenue and looking at expense, maybe not 100%, but close to break even. It doesn't need to make money, but it doesn't need to bleed either. So, what I'd like to do is approximate the expense with the revenue. Now, a little bit of good news. This is Culinary Center expenses starting in 2007 when it opened up, all the way to where we think we're going to be now. And, you have that big spike when all the ADA work was done up there. But, once it settles down, it's not a steep curve. I mean, it's going up a little bit, but it's not a skyrocket. Now, compare that with this. This is revenue and it's going in the right direction. It's nowhere near where it needs to be, but 2014 to '15 where the solid line stops, that's the $77,000. We've already put some price increases in place. We've already done a couple of other things. We're on track to do over $90,000 by the end of this year. So, this is headed in the right direction, but it's not where it needs to be, but I'm seeing great potential to where I think we can do even better than this. And it's a good long-term trend. This is a look at the hands-on classes and the demos and I just want to go to those numbers in the lower right-hand corner. You look at people who are from 50-plus miles away or better, our definition of a visitor. 66% of the hands-on classes are the folks we want to talk to and 54% of the demo classes are the folks we'd like. The rest are locals. Now, it's wonderful that the locals love the Culinary Center, but these numbers don't quite line up with what our mission is. We're supposed to be using this as a tool to bring people from out of town and we're missing the mark here a little bit. The mix isn't quite right. You look at private groups and these are bus tour companies, a group we put together for Best Western, the Travel Oregon Dinner, Coastal Journeys, some stuff we did for Chinook Winds. That's 98%. That's much better. That's more where we need to be because I can start to make the case that it's bringing people into town.
And then putting heads in beds?
And putting heads in beds, which is what it's all about. In terms of earned media, this is the last fiscal year. This is 2014-'15 and we had 64 media hits and we put a value to it and we were very conservative doing that. It's about what that time would have cost had we bought it as ad time. We have some new software that's going to allow us to do that much more precisely, but we didn't have it in hand for this. But, looking at it very, very conservatively, I can make a case that we brought in about $18,000 worth of public relations value because of the Culinary Center. Again, not bad, but we weren't really trying either.
Just, I can ask you a question.
Yeah.
Back to the last slide.
Go ahead.
The $18,000 is, in terms of what, is equal ad time or that you would have purchased?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that AAA via magazine, the article, you look at the size of the article, it would have cost $3,000 to buy that as an ad free.
Right, okay.
So, that's earned media.
All right.
So, like I said, I talked to Rob Pounding. I went through this and it's like, "All right, I've got a picture of where it is. I'm not real happy with the picture, but it is what it is right now." And, you know, talking to Ron, it was like, "What was it supposed to be?" And, I talked to Rob Pounding and we got to talking. Originally, this was the Pacific Coast Center for the Culinary Arts. And it had two main missions. One was to provide countywide training in the hospitality, food and beverage industry and the other was to increase tourism. Oh, thank you. Here's Rob at the grand opening, doing the ribbon cutting with the oven mitts on the ribbon there, which is kind of cool. So, where we started out, I talked to Rob about this and I actually got some of the original documents from when the Culinary Center was put together. And, the hospitality vision went like this. It was supposed to provide professional training and advancement, educate Lincoln City residents on nutrition and health, educate the general public on sustainable food production, training and certifications for Oregon Liquor Control Commission, food handlers, food safety, provide apprenticeship training, provide leasable space for food and beverage service product lines, provide certified kitchen space for small startups, and be an off-site training facility for area food and beverage businesses. Talking to Ron, he's like, "Wow, you know, we just didn't pull it off and it was just too big and I don't think, we just, we just bit off more than we can chew." He goes, "It just, I never realized that vision at all." And, I looked at it and I said, "Well, let me see what we can do and I'll get back to you." Some of it's obsolete, like training and certification for the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. That's all done online now and you don't do that in physical space anymore. But, the other ones, it's like, "Let me take a look. Let me see what we can figure out." And then on tourism, we were to offer training and demos by nationally and regionally recognized chefs, enhance the culinary reputation of Lincoln City, differentiate Lincoln City from other beach destinations by providing learning experiences, enhance Lincoln City's reputation for art and creativity, attract fam tours and meeting convention planners by providing meal service and promotional functions, conduct team-building exercises and provide spousal activities for corporate groups, and provide meal functions for city, civic, and professional group meetings.
How do you define fam?
Oh, it's a familiarization tour. So, if you brought in a whole bunch of bus tour operators, for example, and took them through town going, "Here's all the things that you can sell to your customers to bring them to Lincoln City and things for them to do." And again, I walked through this with Rob and it's like, you know, some of these we're doing, some of these we're not doing as well as we should. Some of them frankly, I don't agree with, like the last one, provide meal functions for city, civic, and professional group meetings. Personally, I think that puts us in competition with private enterprise. That should be a catering company, not us. I mean, I'd be happy to let them use the facility, but it's not something I would want to do as the city. But, the rest of these, it was like, "Let me think about it and we'll see what we can do." Which gets us to recommendations. Let's go back to financial. What do we do to fix the financial picture? Because if we don't do that, none of the rest matters. And, it's pretty easy. We need to enhance revenue, we need to control costs. We need to get more revenue in and we need to spend less money. The revenue enhancement, we need, what I want to do is institute variable pricing and take price hikes. If you go on our website right now, like my wife just did, saying, "I'm coming into Lincoln City and I think I want to take some classes." Oh my, I can't, they're all sold out. They all sell out immediately. And the second they sell out, there's a waiting list with at least as many people as we have in the class, hoping somebody doesn't show so they can get in. Now, if you had a store where every day you opened up and it was a line around the block and everything you had, you sold out, what would that tell you you needed to do? Or, raise your price. We offer a five-course meal with a chef who cooks it in front of you, that does it in a big production and as things are being cooked, you get to eat and you're in a show kitchen and we charge $55 a head. I can't eat steak and steamers and have a beer at Pier 101 for $55. You know, we're just woefully underpriced. Now, the marching orders on the Culinary Center up until now have been, "Don't worry about making money. You're not here to make money. You're here to bring people into Lincoln City." We changed that. The goal now is to break even and bring people into Lincoln City. We have a Thanksgiving holiday, something or another meal demo that Sharon's going to be doing.
It's a Southwest hands-on Thanksgiving.
Thank you. We took it from $55 to $75 and sold out immediately. We're going to go from $77,000 this year to at least $90,000 next year because we're woefully underpriced. So, when demand exceeds capacity, that's telling me that I need to increase the price. If we have a paid guest chef, that guy's got to pay his own way. I'm either getting a monster PR hit because he's here or I'm able to hike the price because that chef is here or he's not coming. And, if those expenses, and we're going to look at it class by class, if the expenses of that class put us above break even, the price gets adjusted. So, if we have filet mignon wrapped in bacon sprinkled in gold dust, that might cost you a little bit more than beanie weenies over toast. So, we're going to be doing all this to maximize revenue, to try to get that expense versus revenue equation fixed a little bit. This is our friends up in Cannon Beach who have a Culinary Center and if you go to the right and look at their pricing, they're charging $149 per person to take the same thing. I don't know that we have the same customers Cannon Beach. I know they're a little bit more upscale, but if they can get $149, we can do better than $55. Salt Lake City, they're doing $85 a person for the summer dinner party and $90 a person for when in a room, eat like an Italian. If they can get 90 bucks, we can get 75. Plus, if you go to the Salt Lake City one, oh, by the way, wine's $15 a bottle and beer's $3 a bottle and here's all this other stuff you can spend extra money on, with ours it's included. So, again, we have plenty of room to play with pricing to make things right. I want to look at changing the mix of classes and demos offered with an emphasis on popularity and revenue opportunity. We make a lot more money on demos than we do on hands-on. There are certain things we do that have an unbelievable appeal versus other things. We're going to play with that mix, again, to get that revenue picture fixed. And, I want to take inventory from the Culinary Center and make it available to hotels. If they sell out like that and people want to get them and it's this great experience and you can't get it anywhere else, why don't we just slap it on the website and say, "Hey, buy it"? Why don't we take that inventory, not announce it on the website, make it available to our hotel community and let them package that and leverage it and use it to bring people in town?
The inventory being classes?
Being the classes, the classes and the demos, the seats that we sell to participate in what's going on in the Culinary Center. It has a powerful appeal. Why not use it to leverage people into town and require them to have a hotel night?
How many hours a day are the classes going on?
How many hours a day?
In other words, what I'm looking at is, if we've reserved a bunch of people that can't get in because we're sold out, is it possible to do two a day instead of four in one?
Keep in mind, we're basically running an operation with one and a half people at best. So, I'll give you a qualified maybe on that, but it would take a rethink on how we do things to make that happen.
Good. I was just thinking that that's a way to bring people in.
Yeah. There's also, and I didn't touch it on this one, there's also a concern that if we go too heavy in the evenings, that that's going to compete with restaurants and that's going to be a red flag. I don't know if that's real or not, but I need to make sure we're not, because most of what we do is during the day right now. And, if we go heavy evenings, do I start getting complaints from the restaurant community? I don't know. And, I don't know if we've ever done it that way and I don't know if it's ever been an But, we have test programs right now set up with Chinook Winds, the Coho, and Wakoma Inn.
Consisting of?
Consisting of, we have some classes set up. They're yours. You promote them, you use them to bring people in town. Now, the second step to that is going to be on our website, and again, those hotels have agreed to work with us because we need to learn how to work with their booking engines. But, I want people to go on our site where it's rather than what we have now, like here's all of our hotels, click here and you go to the hotel website. What I want to have is the Oregon Fall Harvest Getaway where you have this incredible culinary experience, you have two nights in a hotel room, it's yours for $398. Hit this button, "Book Now" and the next thing you know, you're in that hotel's booking engine, everything's pre-populated and you just buy it. Our IT people, we're going to talk to their IT people, we're going to get our web development people involved, and we're going to learn how to send business to the hotels, not just leads or not just awareness.
And, you thought, "How are you going to sort that out? Is it going to be just first come, first served for the hotels?"
We're going to do it as a test first, just to see how it works. And, I shopped around and not everybody was willing to do it because it's going to be a lot of work and, you know how a test goes. It might work, it might not.
And it's going to start fielding those calls.
Yeah, now, the problem I want to have is that it works great and everybody wants in and I don't have enough capacity. I would love to have that problem, you know? But, the other thing too is that if we get that to work, it doesn't have to be just the Culinary Center either. If we learn how to funnel business, booking into our hotel partners, we're going to come up with other things that people can do and other passages they can buy based on interest groups. Is there a chance we'll have a problem with the culinary because it only has so much capacity? Yeah, maybe, but I hope we get there. But, I think this is something very important, that we need to learn how to, after we've spent all of our money, after we've told everybody, "Go to OregonCoast.org," after we've intrigued people about Lincoln City, that website needs to be a funnel where at the end of the funnel, you're looking at something where you can put your credit card number in. And, this is going to be the first shot at it, the first iteration.
Instead of just a static offering. So, that, I'm just saying, if they show interest, it's going to keep driving them to come in.
Yeah, yeah. Now, the website's undergoing some changes. You'll see a cosmetic change pretty soon, which is going to be literally lipstick on a pig. It'll be the same underpinnings, but a nicer graphical interface, which is going to be a Band-Aid and that's going to get us along until we can totally tear the thing down and rebuild it. We're going to build a new website and we're going to be looking to have capabilities where we can talk to booking engines, where we can only pull up hotels that have availability so the burden isn't on our customer to go in and try to find that one hotel that might have a room. This is the first ankling of that and this is going to be our first shot, using what we have right now, the website we already have in place, the underpinnings as they are. We're going to try to get this to talk to a couple of other hotels to learn how to do it. So, it's a lesson... So it's a lesson, it'll hopefully be a lesson on how to use the Culinary Center to bring people into town and hopefully it'll be a lesson on how to use our website to give business to our hotel community. Yep.
I've got one in here. Maybe this already exists, I'm just unaware, but will we get times and menu changes as they go?
Yep.
So we'll know.
Oh, yeah, 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 definitely. As a matter of fact, if you give us feedback that, guys, every time you do the smoked pork and tuna supreme special, we sell out, you know, we'll adjust the product offering to make that happen. But the whole idea is to work in partnership with the hotels and get something that's maximizing the Culinary Center and also doing what you want. I mean, if it's bringing midweek business, if it's, "I need it off-season," if it's whatever, we're going to work to make sure that what we're doing is meeting that need.
What's the max load you guys can handle?
We can do about 50 people at a time if it's a demo, and that's really packing the place. If it's a hands-on, you're in the kitchen cooking your own food, 12 kind of maxes that out. We could probably push it to 15 if we really did, if we really wanted to max it, which is why we make more money on a demo or have more revenue on a demo than we do on a hands-on.
Which is more popular?
Sharon Weeks from the Culinary Center. They're both equally popular, some people want to do hands-on, but then a lot of people would rather sit back and watch. They all sell out, so, but I can tell you the number one thing that sell out would be the hands-on seafood, healthy seafood, anything Italian, anything Asian, whether it's a demo or hands-on. We have three-day classes that happen twice a year, Asian and Italian, that's $325, that's sold out, I've got a waitlist for that, it's going to happen in November.
What's the difference between, in price, between the hands-on and the demo?
Everything used to be $50 for whatever. We, earlier this year, or about a year ago, went up to 55 and then when we started having these discussions, my current, as Ed said, the Southwest Thanksgiving, the Saturday before Thanksgiving is 75, it's got a waitlist.
But the hands-on and the demo are the same, right?
No, we're going to have, the hands-on definitely 75.
Okay.
The demo right now, the ones in December are at 60. I'm kind of feeling that out, that one might be a little harder, so we're feeling that out, but anything that's a private class now, at night is automatically 75. Almost all of those are corporate.
Yeah, and I don't think we've hit the ceiling yet because they're selling out.
Is there room then to increase that price over time?
Yeah, definitely.
In regard to be setting up, lack of a better word, at a price point, we need a food cost matrix for this, so that we're not just locked into, okay, this is all we're going to spend, is $500. $500 doesn't make sense, if you want to spend six, but you can bump it up a little bit, your food cost stays the same.
Right. And I think the trick is, and you know how pricing works, you don't necessarily price based on your cost, we always have to be above cost, but you need to charge what it's worth, you know, what's that perceived value. And we're going to come across things where our cost of goods is here and the top of our pricing is up here, just because people think it's worth it.
My thought is that a hands-on should cost more than a demo.
I won't argue.
I mean, number one, our capacity, so you want to equal that out.
Yeah, and we've just started playing around with pricing and none of the predicted pushback has happened yet, so I don't think we know how far we can take.
And in fact, the number one comment we get is, well, it was always a great value, so we're just lucky we were able to get it for that price as long as we could.
Yep.
Ed?
Yep, go ahead.
Would it make sense to eliminate demos, just focus on, or eliminate hands-on rather than focus on demos?
Not until I find out how far we can push the hands-on.
Okay.
I mean, that's a very exclusive, I mean, one of the things we want to do is to be able to go to a Portland or a Seattle and get a very affluent customer down here with very full pockets who's going to spend a lot of money on everything, and I think that's a tool that'll do it because it's a very exclusive experience.
And the advantage of that is they can tell their rich friends about it.
Exactly.
And we've also already decreased the amount of hands-on for the next, we're only doing 11, I think, not even one a month, as opposed to all the rest of demos.
Are our weeks from Monday through Friday full, or are we only having one, like, three days out of the week? We've got two flat days that are?
Mondays, it's generally empty and that's a good thing, I'll get to that in a little bit. And then the balance are a combination of scheduled classes and also things like bus tour groups coming through, some things we can't predict 100%. So the inventory's a little fluid and there are weeks when it slams them to stern and there's other weeks when it's not, and it just depends on what's coming through town.
Should I tell them what we had this week?
Sure.
So today we had Coastal Journeys, 26 people, Sean from Marco Bills came, broke down some salmon, I did it as well, he did a demo on his smoked fish, they were there for two hours. They're back on Wednesday for a full three-course luncheon, waiting on ahead. And then Thursday night we have the Companion Pet Clinic from McMinnville coming down, it's like a team building, staff, dinner. And then Saturday we have our class for the public, which is an Oregon Fall Demo, 24 people, sold out with a waitlist. And it's pork schnitzel, it's not like it's crazy expensive, you know, but it's local seasonal food. So we get a good mix, we try to do for the public on Saturday, some Friday nights in the summer and then that way they'll spend the night. But you know, in the winter, it's hard to do night classes. We also have to deal with our building security issues, you know, the building shuts down and so I'm really cognizant of that to keep it going.
Is there a chance that having events on Saturday, maybe on Sunday over the weekend, would actually increase the attendance, whereas you've?
Well, we do have Saturdays now, we have only every Saturday, but we try to do 11 to 2. That way, hopefully they spend the night or they're going to spend that night or they have time to go to the outlet mall, or better yet, go to dinner at Blackfish or, you know, some local restaurant.
If you had them later in the afternoon, they might spend the night.
They're not going to go to dinner, but a lot of them spend the night in the theater now because it starts at 11. So, yeah, we play with it, but, and again, you have to remember, the building closes at 6 on Saturday, so, or is it even 5, what's on the library closes on Saturday?
I think it is 5 on Saturday.
It causes so many complications when we're the only ones in that building and it's, I'm the only full-time staff employee of the city that's here, and I'm doing the demo. So yes, I have a sous chef, she's part-time, but we're both in it. We're working it out.
Good. This talks to the other side, cutting costs, and, you know, for every dollar we save, that's a dollar of TRT money that comes back into the VCB. Every extra dollar we make, that's a dollar of TRT money that comes back into the VCB. So this is an important half of the equation. Now, the first one, you need to understand that the Culinary Center isn't everything that Sharon does. Sharon's also our group tour salesperson. She's the one that goes to the NTA convention, she's the one that has a relationship with all the bus tour companies, she's the one that helps schedule them when they come to town, she's the one who's doing product development to help the hotels have more things that these folks can do. Just recently, she got Rusty Truck Brewing to agree to institute a brewery tour, she put together a kite building workshop, and the more of these things that we have, the more likely a bus tour company is going to stop in Lincoln City and the more likely it is that they're going to do an overnight. Sharon and I have been going to hotels and meeting with them, the ones that are interested in bus tour business, the ones that can park and, you know, have a desire to do that type of thing. And we're finding that they're very anxious for us to help represent them at things like the NTA convention and some of the other things we do from a group tour standpoint. About half of Sharon's time is really group sales, not necessarily all Culinary Center. We've never looked at it that way, we've never accounted for it that way, and I know one of the issues is how much Sharon makes, which I'll talk about in a little bit, but...
Well, can I amend that? It wasn't about how much Sharon makes, it was about how much the position paid. I've never questioned Sharon's work, but she does an amazing job.
Well, she does, and frankly, part of it is the city benefits package. If you back out her take-home pay, is it okay to say the number?
Say it, but the position pays.
Yeah, okay, the position pays gross take-home pay, actual dollars that you see show up in your paycheck before taxes, $69,000 a year. The balance, which shows up as total expense in the budget sheets, includes the city benefits. Now, talking to Ken, the manager of Pelican Brewery, who's a big fan of the Culinary Center, and really was talking about a crying need for training, hospitality training and culinary training, his wait people, once you include tips, average about $60,000 a year. So frankly, that position pays about nine grand a year more than a wait position at Pelican Brewing. Granted, the benefits are a lot better, but, you know, that's the net.
I think this helps people understand better because, you know, we're all hearing from constituents constantly, and because it's not broken down into budget as, you know, 50% this, 50% this, it's just 100% this and then...
Right.
You know how people are.
Yep.
And so this is a good thing, I think maybe that's something we need to explore already, is to just say, here's...
And again, I do not want this to be about Sharon.
You're terrific.
Yeah.
And I want to touch, just briefly, on these group tours, I run into them all the time.
Yeah.
And they have nothing but high praises, so you're doing a great job.
I mean, I went back and dug through everything I could find on the Culinary Center, including the HR paperwork from when we were looking for somebody to fill that slot. And Sharon gets mad if I don't, if I call her anything other than executive chef because I guess it was very hard to get that designation and it's not something you let go of lightly. But if you look at when we were hiring that position, that person needed to be a chef, an instructor and a marketing person. And we found somebody who was a chef, who's a very good instructor and had spent 10 years in an advertising agency and understood marketing backwards and forwards. You know, looking at the compensation package for that position, given what that position has to cover, personally, I find it pretty fair.
See, when you described the original thing, I think part of the issue was that we also, or at least I thought we were talking about the marketing of the Culinary Center, I did not know that she was doing tour things, that's like 50% of the job, and that, to me, was a big surprise that you just mentioned that, because I had no concept that that's what that position was doing.
Yeah, and when you get into the group tour business, it's a relationship business, it's a trust business, it's something you've built up over years, and the fact that the group tour people know Sharon, trust Sharon, rely on her to come up with programs that their customers are going to love, that means a lot.
Yeah, I just, it was a big surprise that that's part of that position, I would have, that to me would have been a totally different position.
This may be a lousy equation, but I remember years ago when I first started attending council meetings, was the Public Works Department did a discussion about their sewers and actually showing us what they do. And it was just, it was just an epiphany for me that, okay, yeah, now I see one guy leaning on the shovel over there all the time, that is not public works, it's what they're really doing. And I think that's something that is good about this discussion, is that maybe that needs to be coming forward more often. Here's what this department actually is doing with the tax money and such, and that would alleviate a lot of the problems.
But I'm going to be working with Sharon more and more with the hotels, because a lot of what she's been doing has been concentrated on the Culinary Center. How do we get more bus tours coming through the Culinary Center? I want to shift that a little bit more as, we've got all these contacts, we've got this great bus tour program, how do we translate that into more heads and beds? And if it involves the Culinary Center, great, if it doesn't, great too, as long as they're staying in Lincoln City. So I want to take, and it's, I think it's fair, half of what we're paying Sharon and assign it to that group tour category. When I come back here and present the marketing plan to the city council, that group tour section will be written by Sharon. Where we need to fill in, the assistant instructor position at the Culinary Center, and again, I'm reluctant to use the sous chef because I don't think that describes it accurately. We're going to, and it's kind of a neat story, she started as a dishwasher and worked her way up and is now to the point where for some of the demos and whatnot, she's just kind of blossomed and blossomed and is doing an incredible job. We can have her fill in when Sharon is doing other duties as assigned, so we have some depth, we have some backup, we have some ways of getting things done. I want to see, and this is where Sharon gets hackles, I think, if we can reduce ingredient costs through menu adjustments, standardized offerings, partnerships and promotions. We spend about $38,000 a year on food, I'd like to knock that down. But if I can get free wine from the Oregon Wine Commission and if I can get free seafood from the Seafood Commission and if I can do some other things to get that ingredient cost down without impacting quality, we're going to do it. And again, eliminate those paid guest chefs, not covered by pricing or PR.
What are your costs now?
Total, total?
Yeah.
$38,000.
What's the percentage though? What percentage of sales?
Uh, it'd be 50% probably.
50?
Yeah.
So you're 20%.
Yeah.
Well, then a big problem we're running into is, let's say, if we wanted to shift some of this to a guest chef program and just let someone else run the show, you have staffing of it and security, because, am I correct in assuming Sharon and Donna are the only ones that work on weekends?
Well, Sharon and Donna, they are the staff and Donna's part-time.
Is there any backup staff available for weekends?
We use volunteers, Rob Pounding steps in whenever we need him, he's been great. And we have some other paid chefs, what I want to do, and I'm getting ahead of myself now, is rather than...
Let me just jump in. If you're talking paid staff, we would have to add that expense into it.
Right, I guess what I meant, the limitation is staffing for weekends.
Yeah, if it's, if the activity is on a weekend and our current staff is not there, then someone would have to come in and fill in as far as the building goes and everything that goes with that chef. There would be that cost.
So also, as you raise your costs, you have a need, as you raise your prices, your food cost percentage-wise is going to drop all by itself.
Right.
You don't necessarily have to spend less, the same with higher prices, does the same thing?
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking for that sweet spot, it's a magic combination of the two, you know? Go ahead. So here's where we are on the left and here's where I want to go on the right. And actually, the only numbers that really matter are those totals down there, but this is me playing around figuring out how we can get there. Right now, even if you count the value of the PR, even if you do a very conservative, here's the value of the hotel room nights, assuming only 20% of those 50-plus mile people actually stayed in town and all of them only stayed one night, our revenue versus expense, where we are right now, is still minus $87,000. Revenue as a percent of cost is only 54%, again, I don't find that acceptable. Go to the right, if I properly account for Sharon's time, if I can cut $10,000 out of food and supplies through promotional programs and sponsorships and whatnot, if I don't do most of the guest chefs and dial that back, if I take other opportunities out of miscellaneous... of miscellaneous, coupled with changing the mix of classes, getting pricing up and everything down there, I'm close to break even. And even if indirect revenue doesn't change at all, I'm well in the black. That's where I want to go. I'd like to have about two years to get there with maybe a report every six months on, here's our progress and here's how we're moving along.
On the guest chef thing, if you find, let's say, a name chef that wants, would like to come down and you would like them to come down.
Oh, yeah.
Wouldn't you just adjust your price up to cover their costs?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, so you could still have that, that, but I mean, the people might pay.
The ones I'm cutting.
If it's a really famous chef and they really want to see him, they'll pay three hundred dollars, you know? But I mean, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, exactly. Now, the ones I'm cutting here are the ones that come in and I pay the money and I don't know what I got for it, so.
I got you. I was.
It was a nice demo.
Different, different concept of what I guess.
There's another little twist to that, too. I want to get it to the point where chefs want to come here.
Right.
Whether they're paid or not.
It would seem to be more of the cultural center model that they get a percentage of the door. So bringing someone will bring people and they'll take a percentage of that.
Yeah.
Do you guys do a monthly, I know you're not private, so we call it profit and loss, but do you guys do a monthly profit and loss type thing?
I don't know that we've done it monthly, but yes, we do. Yeah, we look very closely at expenses.
Do you know where your shift is headed?
Yeah, yeah. And what I want, I want to definitely do that with the Culinary Center. And I want to get it down to the point where we have an idea of what each class costs versus the revenue that's coming in. So if there's a bad misalignment there of expense versus revenue, we can make an adjustment. So, yeah, definitely. And that's, and we'll be doing that on an ongoing basis until we get the shift up to where we want it to be. So hospitality, you know, sitting down and talking to Rob, he's like, wow, you know, we want to do all these things, but it didn't work out, we can't do it. And frankly, I looked at it and VCB can't do it either. I don't have the expertise or the talent or the money or the staff. So through me, it can't happen. However, if I talked to the Oregon Coast Community College, I sat down with Dave Price, and it was like, how would you like to have a commercial kitchen as a lab and we'll help you get a culinary program together? He said, oh, yes. And we just had a meeting with the president of the college, and it's going to happen in increments. It's not going to come out full-blown because there's some big investments that they need to make and whatnot. We think we're going to start out with a community college-issued culinary certification. It won't be a state certification, but it'll be this person knows how to sharpen knives, make stock, you know, whatever the things are. There'll be culinary, and there'll also be hospitality for that front-of-the-house person who would be waiting tables or being agreed or whatever. And work hand-in-glove with them toward a state-certified program, use that Culinary Center as their lab space, and come up with a hospitality training program and a culinary program, and probably with some seed money from us to get it started. Not as a regular amount of money that goes to them, but again, being that incubator to get it going.
Can they earn that certification from the state here or do they have to go elsewhere to do that?
No, they would do it here once that program is fully in place.
Maybe just like a welding certificate or?
Yeah, yeah. Now, talking to the restaurants in town, they're crying for people like this. They would love to have a new employee that knew their way around the kitchen. They would kill to have somebody that they didn't have to train with paying guests out in front of the house. And, you know, everybody I've talked to said there's just a crying need for this. The college is doing their due diligence right now. They're talking to the restaurant community. And if they hear anything halfway what I heard, this is going to happen. And this is going to be that one big piece of Rob Pounding's vision on what this Culinary Center was supposed to be. And it'll start to feed the restaurants with talented kids that are, will be off in a very good career and a very nice space.
I envision this as a, just a local development, just for the local folks. I mean, do you anticipate people moving here to take advantage of this program?
If it's.
And that gets into a housing issue.
Yeah. I don't know, if we really blow out the state-certified program and it takes off, maybe, because there are people that move here to go through their aquarium science program. Right now, we're thinking more local. And I don't know that any of us have sat down and really thought this would be something that would attract a lot of folks from out of state. I mean, if it gains a reputation, it could, but immediately, no. And immediately, it's going to be a certificate issued by the college. I mean, it's not going to be something state-recognized. We're going to have to start fairly small and build it from there. But the big piece that they don't have is that nice big kitchen we have upstairs in the Culinary Center. And it's wide open every Monday, so they can do the classroom sessions at the college and they can have the labs on Monday. It doesn't get in anybody's way, and we're taking the facility that's generally unused that day and putting it to very good use.
How do we get the revenue from that program?
How do we get the revenue from that program?
Does the community college then pay us in order to use the kitchen or how does that work?
Frankly, I'm looking at it as they can just use the kitchen. The town needs that program. If we get this program in place and we start having a good population of folks in town that know how to run a restaurant and know their way around the kitchen and know how hospitality works, you're going to see the culinary scene start to rise up in Lincoln City. You're going to see restaurants that run much better and be more profitable. You're going to see some of those kids, after they learn the ropes, opening their own places. I mean, I think it's some great.
Yeah, if you tie it in with, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
If you tie it in with what the cultural, the C C C. The Chamber of Commerce was trying to do with Lovey and Lincoln and the whole, you know, we need to have a consistent message, and that is just a perfect place to start that message.
Exactly.
And I talked with Dave Price regarding this whole issue some time back, and I think, I think it's the culinary part of it, the hospitality program part of it, Oregon Coast Community College is, has been missing the bet. We have, you know, a bazillion hotel rooms, and we're all crying for qualified desk people with qualified, you know, and so on and so forth. And if you start improving that, the quality of your desk people improves, which means that the guest is going to have a better experience, they will want to be there. That means more room nights, the same way with restaurants. I'm embarrassed by how many restaurants we have that have pedestrian food and some of it not even pedestrian. And this town should have some, far more excellent restaurants, you know, and even some of those that quote are, lump themselves as excellent restaurants, frankly, I find their offerings a little less than excellent because the people in the kitchens don't have the skills. So if we have people, a program through Oregon Coast Community College that is teaching people how to do this sort of thing and how to improve, that means that the restaurant scene will improve. Again, that means people will want to come here if they have a good experience in hotel or motel, and they have a good experience in a restaurant, they will want to stay. And then the other component is the shops in town. If we can start getting hospitality into the shops, you know, we may actually, you know, have a vibrant community that makes lots of money all times of the year. I mean, we're on the right track, and I think more and more motels are trying. And I think that more and more of the restaurants have realized that there's an issue, and they're trying, but this, this would be the missing part that I think would help. It's not going to be the end-all, but it certainly would be a big leg up. And so from my standpoint, you know, worrying about charging them the culinary or the community college a fee for a Monday class or a Monday lab in a facility that's just sitting empty becomes immaterial. Because if everything improves, TRT improves, city makes more money, too. So, you know, I just think, you know, and you've been in the restaurant business and you're in, you know, been in motel business, both, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. It's hard to find qualified people. I mean, just somebody who knows how to chop a salad, for gosh sakes.
Well, we all know when we look at, when we look at an application, they go, oh, you worked there? Great. Oh, you worked there? Uh-uh.
Yeah, so I mean, you know.
You know, not to digress, no, make this very clear. I had an employee, I asked him to chop an onion. He chopped the onion, he left the peeling on. I said, look at this, would you? Oh, okay. But, you know, one of the questions, I've gone through town and counted the number of restaurants that we have versus the amount of restaurants that we had thirty years ago.
Oh, yeah.
There's only one or two restaurants different. So you have to ask yourself, what has made the restaurants this still? Is it all the fast food? Is it casino? Why isn't it a vibrant industry? And it isn't, and with all the foodies running around, it shouldn't be. And so in my opinion as well, that's the least, if that, if you can get us some results on that, we're not restaurant business anymore, but I know it would make a difference.
Well, and the simple things like teaching cooks, chefs, whatever you want to call them, how to actually shop for a cut of meat, how to shop for a vegetable or a piece of fruit. I mean, I've seen the stuff that comes off these trucks, and if you don't go through those cases, you're going to end up with half of your case of crap. So you rip out half of it and send it back and say, I don't, I'm not going to accept this. But, you know, people don't because they don't really have the training.
So we're in favor.
So, I'm sorry.
You know when to stop saying.
Yeah. That's just a sore spot with me. I mean, we should have, we should have the most marvelous restaurants in the world down here, and we just don't. We have like three or four that are pretty good, you know, but not great.
Yeah.
I think a big component of that is the hospitality and the wait staff who don't try to upsell. They.
Ask them what the specialist is.
Yes.
I don't know. I think it's in the bag. I'm sorry.
I think we did that one, too. Okay, Rob talked about dietary education, teaching folks in Lincoln City. Channel Four originates here, as you all well know. The head end is in City Hall, and apparently we can put almost anything on it we want as long as we get the approval of the city manager, and I know him. So one of the things that I would like to do in the long term, we already have a show kitchen up there, and I've been spending time talking to the folks at Charter Communications, and I talked to the guy that's the head of their public access channel thing, and the equipment has gotten amazingly cheap. You can get three cameras, fluid head, tripods, lighting, have them all feed into a MacBook Pro with a copy of Final Cut Pro in it for three hundred bucks, and you're in business for ninety-five hundred dollars total. So again, going back to how things have changed and continue to change, and the fact that it's getting critical, that we start to, we need to start acting like our own medium. We need to learn how to do video and video on our own. If we can get that set up, if we can feed into Channel Four, which is easy to do once we get set up, Samaritan North Lincoln Hospital would love to have their dietitian come out and do shows that we pipe into Channel Four on how to eat healthy, how to cook healthy.
Are they on charge?
Pardon?
Are they on cable there?
At the hospital?
So that they're just watching?
I think they should be.
Yeah, they should be.
But, I mean, this little piece, you know, between the charter thing and the fact the equipment's gotten so cheap is actually pretty easy to do now. And there's another piece we can, we can very easily accomplish that goes back to the original vision of the Culinary Center. And entrepreneurship, we actually do some of this now, but it's a fairly well-kept secret. We need better awareness of the Culinary Center as a resource for Lincoln City culinary-related businesses. You can, you can lease the space up there, and there are folks that do it. This is a petite suite. Whenever they run out of space and get a big order they can't handle, they're up in the Culinary Center. When the Bacon Beach and Brews thing was up at the casino, the casino was down here prepping, and so was the Chamber of Commerce. And we just had Mo's in there doing a big cook-off team-building session, and if you read the quote down there, "Thank you for letting us use your wonderful facility. The cook-off was an amazing team-building activity for our crew. Thanks again, and if we could ever help you out with community support in any way, don't hesitate to call." That's from Joe Lee Bancroft, the president of Mo's.
Wow.
We've done team-building for Nike. Help me out here.
Eli Lilly.
Eli Lilly.
That medical group that was just here, Polar.
Yeah. But, you know, we've been doing it, maybe not as much as we should, but that little piece is happening. We also get calls from people saying, man, I want to open a restaurant. I'd like to do a cupcake bakery. And it's like, great, do a business license? No. Do a business plan? No. Do you have insurance? No. But I really like to bake cupcakes. We eventually turn them away, and it doesn't work. Dave Price is like, give them to me, okay? He's got his business development center down there at the community college, and he's agreed to interview, vet, get people set up, and then take, and then send them up to us. Where we can get them on their feet, they can use the kitchen, they can get their business started. But that's been the missing piece. We haven't had that entity that would get all the pieces lined up, and we don't have the time, the staff, or the people, or the expertise to do that ourself. But Dave is like, no problem. We can make that happen. And then tourism.
And before we need hospitality.
Yeah.
Have you considered the high school as well as the hospital and the college?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we had a talk with the high school about two days ago. Actually, it was Career Tech that wasn't Taft. But Career Tech is very interested in branching out into culinary.
Does the high school still have a culinary arm?
I'll be honest with you, I know they did, they do, yeah. See, that's something else. What I'm trying to do is to make Dave Price the hub to where we coordinate it all, to where we just don't have like, you know, too many entities in and out and whatever and tripping over each other. But if we do it right, you could have a kitchen Taft, do the culinary thing, have the lab space up in the Culinary Center, and then have that dovetail into the community college and come out with an associate's degree.
We have Quanish as a scholarship program with a specific scholarship for culinary, for Taft.
Okay, great. But, yeah, all those, all those pieces we're kind of looking at, don't have them all together yet, but definitely. But it has to be coordinated, and it has, and it has to go to where it all fits together so we're not having two competing things tripping over each other. But, yeah, definitely. So on tourism, we need to start pitching TV show food segments up in Portland and Eugene. We've done it once in a while, a little bit in the past, but haven't been aggressive. We need to shift gears on that. So when the salmon are running, or it's halibut season, or whatever, we've got Sharon up on TV as the guest chef that pops in on the morning show once in a while to show people how, you know, this is in season and here's how you cook it and that type of thing. And there are minimal to that. Coin TV out of Portland wants to talk to us about, about doing a cooking show series.
Wow.
That's in negotiation. I don't know where it's going to go, but they're, they're very, very interested in that. I want to be Travel Oregon's go-to for coastal culinary PR, okay? If they want to do something about food on the coast, hey, guys, we have a show kitchen. Come on down, use it, bring in your celebrity chef or travel writer or whatever, we'll get it all set up for you. Again, we haven't had strong dialogues with them before, but we're building those bridges, and we're going to make that happen. We want to do culinary features with Northwest Travel and Leisure, Eighteen Fifty-Nine. The food writer for Eighteen Fifty-Nine. The food writer for 1859 just came through, did a session at the Culinary Center and went clamming. And did she go?
Mushroom eating crab.
And mushroom eating crabbing. So, there's going to be a huge article in 1859 about that. The editor from Northwest Travel and Leisure just came down, did a culinary class, and is going to send his food writer down to do the experience and do a write-on. And this is just asking. This isn't anything magic. This is us just putting a little bit of effort behind it. So, I think we've barely seen the tip of the iceberg when it comes to PR opportunities with the Culinary Center. And then, if we get all this rolling, if we've, if we've got YouTube videos, if we've got the regular thing on Channel Four, if we've got 1859 and Northwest Travel and Leisure working with us, if we've got the Coin TV show, that's when the local chefs get showcased, and we start making them into mini-celebrities to where people know them, love them, and want to eat their food.
Assuming that these local chefs have gone through our classes.
Yes. But, yeah, if you look at Travel Oregon, they have their whole Oregon Bounty Tourism Development Program, and we're getting plugged into that. And again, I just told you about 1859 and Northwest Travel. We're going to be having huge features in both of those. And then in group sales, we want to continue to grow that group tour and corporate group business with the Culinary Center as a capstone for it. And also expand those group tour efforts beyond the Culinary Center with hotel partnerships and the new product offerings that I mentioned before, things like the Brewery Tour and the kite-making program and some of the other things we're putting together that Sharon will be building and talking about when we present the marketing plan. This, this is a little hard to read. This is from Coastal Journeys. This is a bus tour company that comes through here on a regular basis, and we just got a stack of letters from them, from their customers. The first one says, "Your Culinary Center is a wonderful attraction. Chef Sharon and her staff are jewels in the Lincoln City crown. And it was a perfect introduction to the delicious seafood and wine of the Oregon coast. We will recommend visiting Lincoln City to our friends." That's the type of feedback we get when the bus folks come through. They absolutely love the Culinary Center. And I also want to see if we can get, and I haven't done any work on this at all yet, but I want to see if we can get some promotions going to Oregon Wine, Seafood Oregon. There's all these industry associations that promote Oregon product. If I can tell them that I can reach beyond just the couple of folks that are in the class, if I've got that video presence, if I've got Channel Four, if I've got a YouTube channel with a million viewers, I can start getting things from them. I want to see if I can leverage that to where we do citywide events. Newport has their Seafood Fest, Seafood and Wine Festival. I want to see something we can pull off that's culinary-related that goes stem to stern on Lincoln City. We've got McMenamins in town, we've got Moe's, we've got Dutch Brothers. I want to talk to all those folks to see if we can do something system-wide that promotes Lincoln City and brings them into town. Again, using the Culinary Center as that point of legitimacy as to why they want to work with us and talk with us. This is from the Oregon Wine side. You can see the upcoming events that they're promoting. This next slide is a, the Portland Seafood and Wine Festival, Seafood Oregon, Oregon Trawl, and Dungeness Crab, and Salmon, and I think that's tuna on the bottom. They got money from all those folks to be able to make that thing happen. And, you know, if you look at Feast Portland, which brings in chefs from all over Oregon to, to all over the country. Yeah. We need a, we need a smaller version of that that happens here in Lincoln City. Those are all things we can organize around the Culinary Center. So, all that said, we're down to two options. Option one is we shut it down and walk away and call it a day. What happens when we shut it down is we immediately lose the $90,000 plus in offsetting revenue, and we save $35,000 that we can reinvest. Now, that's assuming that the staff is reassigned to the VCB. We get $106,000 in savings if we terminate the staff and get rid of our group sales effort. We'll have $106,000 to play with. The $106,000, oh, go ahead. Oh, and we'll cancel these programs. Culinary and hospitality training goes away. The small business development goes away. Nutritionist video, local chef showcase, culinary shows on Channel Four YouTube website, we don't do those anymore. Travel Oregon culinary partnerships, we just tell them, "Never mind." The hotel packaging program, we don't try that. We don't do the test. We walk away from that. All the classes, corporate team building, spousal programs, those cease. And the promotions with Oregon Wine, Oregon Seafood, Rusty Truck Brewing, Moe's, the folks we're starting to talk with, we don't do any of that. And the citywide culinary events, I don't see where it makes sense anymore. And again, the culinary PR that we're starting to get through Northwest Travel, 1859, Coin TV, we back away from that and we do other things. The $106,000, just to put it in perspective, is equal to five room nights per month, and I did use a multiplier, sorry, Kip. Ten bus tour groups, and twenty media hits, assuming our current mix, which is heavy local and not a lot of out-of-town, that's $106,000. That would cover it, and anything above that would be money in the bank. Or we can take what we have as a wonderful asset and utilize it better. We can generate revenue and cut costs to replace that TRT funding that's going in it and bring it back into the VCB. We use our, we'll do variable pricing, we'll charge according to the value of the experience, we'll have an optimal mix of demos and classes, and the goal is to get $100,000 in TRT funding out of the Culinary Center and back into the VCB. We, we want to do that Oregon Coast Community College Culinary Program. I can't put a dollar amount on that. But what it's going to do is to give opportunity to the youth of Lincoln County. It's going to give our restaurant community and hotel communities quality employees. It's going to raise the bar in terms of what we offer to our guests, and I can't put a number on it, but it will mean more guests in the long run. And then the small business development incubator, that commercial-grade kitchen space and expertise for culinary startups. You're going to see new businesses pop up because people will have a place where they can learn how to do it. And also that backup kitchen space for small food-related businesses. As they grow, when they get slammed, there's a place to go. There's, there's some backup, and, and they have something to operate as kind of that pressure-release valve. And the lodging sales tool, I'm real excited about the Culinary Center classes being packaged and resold by hotels, taking the group tour contacts and expertise, the group tour inventory that's represented by the Culinary Center, and making that a sales tool for the hotels. And really starting to work hand and glove with the hotels more on that corporate meeting and team-building and spousal program. We've, we've been doing that, but I think, again, we haven't maximized where we, where we can go with it. And then on PR, getting on television, cooking demos, regular print coverage in the major magazines, regular print and online stories on our source markets, those television food shows. I would love to, once we get things started, starting to raise our sights a little bit and go after man versus food, or some of those food-themed TV shows to, to get them to Lincoln City. And I think if we had the video library and the, the things to show to them, it'd be And then promotions and partnerships, Seafood Oregon, Oregon Wine, McMenamins, Moe's, Dutch Brothers, all those folks. And then Travel Oregon is a goldmine if we're smart and we use it right. And Travel Oregon has a culinary tilt. They're big on culinary tourism, and I think we can leverage the Culinary Center to get more than our fair share of that. And video, local chefs, local regional cuisine, promotional partner feature, nutrition and health, Channel Four, YouTube, all these outlets, building a library that we can, we can take up to Portland and offer up to the TV stations. There's just a multitude of things that could come out of this that I think would be incredible. The other piece of this, and it's something I'm going to come in and talk broader stroke, VCB in general, a while, at another time, but when I took this to Ron at first, he goes, "Ed, this is great, and, yeah, the equipment's cheap." And he goes, "Well, who's editing? Who's behind the camera? Who makes all this happen?" The Community College has a multimedia program that they're putting in place, and...
The high school has one too.
And the high school has one too. Imagine graduating from something like that, going into a job interview with a television show under your arm. "Here's my portfolio." You know? That's what I would love to accomplish with this in addition to everything else. And that's it.
Well, I'll start playing golf.
Oh, yeah. Great. I agree. Hundred percent. One problem we're having is the VCB being in charge of the Culinary Center makes it geared strictly towards, how do I say this? It's not, not everyone can use it. I can go to the, we've got to change some of these names, to the Community Center, and I can go work out. I can go and slink now. I can use these facilities. I can go to the Cultural Center almost any day of the week and use their facilities for something. The VCB and the Culinary Center, however, is very limited in, into how people can access it. And I'm wondering whether, you know, whether it requires a larger budget or a different vision for it to be not just the VCB, but, I don't know, something else. And then, I don't know if that was clear at all. And then something, another component that I think has completely dropped was the community and teaching. And how do we, when I see, please, this is just being as vague and as broad as I can, people, okay, let's just say I'm watching people in the grocery store buying garbage, and they don't know how to prepare a fresh vegetable to save their lives, yet part of our taxes are going to fund that cart full of garbage. Could we offer something here? Is, is it the mission of the city to do that or not?
And I think that's, excuse me for interrupting, but I think that's that partnership that we, he was talking about with Samaritan North Lincoln.
Right.
Is, is that if you have a nutritionist who can put together a show on the proper way to prepare and cook appliances of fresh broccoli.
Absolutely.
So, you keep all the nutrients off. How do you treat this particular product? And you show that on Channel Four. Now, granted, not everybody has Channel Four. However, if you can, if you can do that, or this is a component, I mean, you can't force people to watch it, but at least there's a component that you can. Simple things in, you touch on it, and I will expand on it, is number one, house shop.
Right.
It's amazing to me that people just walk down the aisle and grab.
Right.
They don't look at packaging, they don't look at what's in the ingredients, they don't look at the price per ounce, they don't have a clue what all of that stuff means. And I think that's, if we're going to do a Channel Four type of thing that has to do with culinary, I think it needs to be far more inclusive, and it needs to include some of those things. Why do you buy a chicken that costs you a little bit more that's free range as to, as opposed to an Arkansas chicken in a bag? Why would you do that? Well, there's a nutritional value, number one. You're not paying for a ton of fat and a bunch of chemicals, you know, so, and that, it tastes better. You know, so, I mean, those are the kind of things that, that if you're going to utilize Channel Four in a, in an educational sort of way, and if we want to do the hallmark of culinary goodness for Lincoln City, which I think is marvelous frankly, then those are the kind of things that we need to develop along that line too. And we can do that through nutritionists, through the hospital, there are other people, you know, the, a simple thing like the Oregon Wine Commission can show you, you know, talk, perhaps somebody come down and, or even send you a video about how would you choose a wine? It goes with what? And why would you choose that? You know? You know, these are the kind of things. We have olive farmers in Oregon, which I didn't know until a year ago, and they have an excellent product, and we should be utilizing that product when we're doing things. You know, so, we have garlic farmers, you know, within a, within a 75-mile radius of here, you have the most marvelous collection of fresh local product. At certain times, the, or some of it isn't, you know, perfect. But you have this fresh local product that's treated well. It may not be food or any, but it's treated well, it's farm-raised, and most of it's farm-raised. It's wonderful product, and how can you utilize that best so you're not taking the pork chop and cooking it into shoe leather? You know, but being aware that you don't want, you know, dripping blood, you know? And people don't know how to cook.
They don't want to lose that component.
And it's nice, yeah, it's nice to show the culinary skills of how to create a marvelous or whatever, but it, there's also, I think the lacking component is how to do some really basic stuff. And I think that's as important as an educational piece anyway it is to me.
Right. And that's why I was kind of questioning.
But you said it will draw people to Lincoln City.
Well, I don't know that it will draw people, but if we have a healthier people that live here that, and they are starting to demand that, if they're living here and they, they're going to a restaurant and they see something cooked into oblivion, and they know how it should be, they're going to demand that that restaurant improve that. And that restaurant will improve that because they want that business in winter when they don't have as many guests. That will improve the culinary scene, which will enhance the tourism. So, I, it's, it's a different approach. It's starting at the very basics and working its way up, you know?
I, I think what I was after though was, and I agree.
Why?
Is the, you know, Rob's, Tony's original vision of it.
Yeah.
Was that it would be a place for people from the community to learn, and not necessarily master cooking skills, but just basic cooking skills. And again, I don't know if that's something that the city even, you know, wants to be involved in or not, but it seems a fairly important thing, and maybe just the private sector needs to pick up.
One of the reasons I've been really thrilled with what Ed and his staff have put together on this is that they're following the basic thing of how I told them that I would be evaluating them. The VCB of which the Culinary Center is a component of that. The first is, are their activities attracting people to the city?
Yeah, we're not good for your audience.
The first, on how they, so, one of the reasons I've been very pleased with this is that, is that when Ed and I began discussing this, and he's carried this forward with his staff, is how I would be evaluating their performance. And, and it's really two things. The first is, are their efforts, are their activities drawing people to, to Lincoln City? Are they coming? And then the second is, is that at the end of the year, if I go visit with the hotel or a VRD owner or somebody like that, and I ask them, "The VCB has helped me buy," and then they fill in the blank. And if they can't fill in the blank, either we haven't helped them, or they don't know what it is we do. And so, that's what I've, you know, told them, that this is how at least I will be evaluating on your performance with it. And one of the reasons I really like the presentation that you heard today is that everything focuses in on those areas. Whether it's a restaurant that comes back and says, "I got great employees because of the partnership the VCB and the Culinary Center has with the school," or the hotel comes in and says, "This has worked out great because we've been able to sell this as a package," or the, or the different marketing techniques that are reaching a broader group of people up in the areas, in the areas where we know they're coming from. All that Ed has described, to me, fits within those, within really what we had talked about as the underlying purpose of the VCB and the, of which the Culinary Center is a, is a component.
And I agree with what you said. And I think... And I agree with what you said, and I think that's true. What I was talking about was something other than that, was something for utilization of Channel 4.
Sure.
And I think that the Culinary Center could have a, you know, a finger in that.
Sure.
The whole concept of the Culinary Center was, the way we understood it when we were on, when I was on the council that approved this, was that this was something that would enhance the culinary reputation of Lincoln City. It would theoretically elevate the culinary offerings within the community, and it would give a good way to showcase Lincoln City. And yet, still be able to teach, you know, some basic steps so that the people that are going to be serving that food, and cleaning the dishes, and preparing that food have better skills and better knowledge so that they can be part of that whole dining experience. And I think that's the one thing that, you know, I hadn't been seeing, and I was getting a little testy about it. But then, when I see now that half of the job of the person is actually doing marketing over here, which I had no concept that that was going on, now it makes sense, you know, it all makes sense. But now, how do we get back into that component? The way we do it is through cooperative development, through Oregon Coast Community College and the Small Business Development Center. And I think that's the proper vehicle, utilizing that space. And then I'm saying, we should be going one step further if we start utilizing Channel 4 for more than just a repeat of meetings ad infinitum, or ad nauseam, whichever. Then maybe we can come up with some nutritional programs which would enhance all of that, you know. So, you know, that's all I was getting, you know. I guess I want, want a lot. Education, if we're doing what we should be doing, the education of people is, in proper ways to do things, I think has to be a component, if we're going to do that. You know, I think that's a tool.
And I get back to my concern about how, how many hours were open. Kip had brought up quite some time ago, and I agree with completely, is that Lincoln City should be the hub for the Central Coast. You start your trip here, and then you spread out. Now, what I'd like to see is within that hub is the several hubs. For, if you are coming here for a recreational experience and outdoor activity, you go to the Community Center. They will have every bit of information you could possibly want about that. If you're coming here for a cultural experience, you want to know about concerts, art, you stop by the Cultural Center, there's somebody there to talk to you. You want to know about culinary, uh, we're not open. And do we need to expand that budget? Do we need to expand the staff, and do we need to expand the vision of it to fulfill that niche? Because it is a huge economic driver, and I recognize that. And so I just think we need to kind of piece that in there, but can this be part of that group of hubs?
Scott, you're making notes? You're taking notes?
Okay, good.
Hope you're sure.
Anyone else have any questions, notes, thoughts? Well, Ed, this was just terrific.
Yeah, it was, very informative. And I like the direction that you seem to be aiming off into. I think that's, I think that's what you should be doing.
I really have to say that Rob, I don't think made it very easy.
Yeah.
When I sat down with him, all of a sudden, it was clear.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, and I never dealt much with Sandy before, so I can't say. Gosh, you're great, but I'm glad you're here. You're a person of choice.
A couple things.
Okay, you win, we'll call it Beach Town Culinary Center, how's that?
I thought you had a wonderful presentation, and I would love you to, for you to hear that. It's really nice to have someone in here that has a business sense. You're full of ideas, and the only thing I'd like to mention there is that you got to have a lot of ideas to have a good idea. So I hope that if some of those things don't come true on it, that we don't hold you strictly accountable, that you feel happy to judge someone off that doesn't work.
Well, I appreciate that.
And I'm very confident, mostly because of you and your staff. And it's a pleasure being associated with you, so thank you.
Anyone else? That, I guess, we're adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you.